This conference will now be recorded.
This one?
The financial one is, it made no sense for me to show you 31 January's numbers for this meeting. So the treasures report wraps up January's expenditures and income. No change there. But what I wanted to do for this meeting is show you where our accounts sit as of last Friday, closer to this meeting. So you see the buckets of money that we have more current. So it's more, it's more live data rather than say, hey, three weeks ago, we had this much money in the accounts and so on and so forth. So that's, just go by that, the one in the packet. You're still going to see what Infomart produces for us. Still woefully unimpressed by that. So we are starting to do this on our own using Infomart's product. So that's page two, right, right behind the treasure report. There's the Infomart monthly accounting of all our accounts. This is, this is straight from our bank accounts that we have this statement. So I would go by this, not Infomart's. Uh, that's a combination of the income from the assessments as well as we moved $300,000 in the last year. You all voted on that while back.
Yeah, no, we six of two, plus we moved six of two.
Well, you're looking at for next year, next month's report.
That's pretty much assessments.
More than that, but yes, yeah. The monthly income we get from assessments.
Primary.
Yes, yeah. We're not putting more money in there other than from that method. Yeah. And then we had updated late last night from our engineer. You have the current picture of our recreation infrastructure. That's one page. So I had him update everything. And then you have what's in our recreation plan moving forward. That's what the expectation is. So that's your two comparisons. It shows the, I mean, obviously you can see a difference. Shows the trail around the lake, shows a bigger pool and so on and so forth. So any comments or feedback on that? You'll get it back to us over the next couple of weeks. I'll sit down with the engineer and we'll tweak that. And we'll talk about it a little bit about that.
What was going to be the extension?
No, it's not tied to that. It's a separate, it's adult, adult lats with a swimming set. It'll all be in a complex.
Call the meeting to order. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody is here. Uh, the announcements, I would, put my jewelry back together. The next regular meeting of the board of supervisors will take place Tuesday, March 26th at 9:00 a.m. At this community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Stevens, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. The key upcoming events, the club championship, men and ladies, will be March the 6th and 7th. The 50th anniversary music fest, March the 13th. The LGA club championship, March 13th. The MGA member guest, March the 20th through the 23rd. The spring craft fair is March the 23rd. And the Easter buffet at the club is March the 31st. Uh, I'd like to call for public comment now, and it needs to be limited to three minutes. And, um, we'll call for public comment. Anybody have anything to comment that is not on the agenda? Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Public discussion? Call the vote? Okie dokie, call the vote.
Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor Herrick? Supervisor McLaughlin? Supervisor Norton? President Phillips?
Yes. Okay. Message from, he's not here. Do you have any update on him?
No, ma'am. I have a meeting with, uh, two of the commissioners Friday, Commissioner Cox and Roberts. So we will discuss with them ongoing initiatives in the district, give them an update on the district. Other than he's working with Mr. Carraway on the parcels that went up for the sheriff sale. And our reacquisition of some of those for our wastewater as well as other instructions. That's going positively, but nothing else.
Okay. Alrighty then. The action agenda, an update on the wastewater plant project.
Okay, morning. In your packet, just a quick update where we stand right now. We have the DPD product that's came back from the Florida Water Association. There's some last minute details we have to work with them on and some recommendations on their part as well as from our legal counsel. We've had some meetings with some interested vendors trying to get some analysis before we put this out for RFP. And those are, these are large companies that come down from, uh, out asking to check. Environmental assessment, we're getting some estimates for additional work, just to have those in, ready to go. We're working with our accountant Schumacher and obviously we're dealing with our land acquisitions, the parcels that are there. The funding reserves are what we originally had, plus the vote of this, the, you all voted again, the last budget here to put $300,000 in there. So that's the start point of this fund that we're going to build to execute this project. The biggest issues on Thursday, we'll be having a discussion with council, new council here. We'll be discussing the, the entirety of this project and a couple of the requirements that, uh, that come out of the need, that came out of our vote as well as the need for us to do this per the state statutes. Another posting in the paper, the actual resolution language that was needing a lot of the, the funding, the FRWA data. So since we got that now, we're adding, we're putting this into this product as well as a recommendation right now. I thought more on Thursday is that for our parcels, mainly our commercial parcels, the need to get outside expert additionally to figure out the assessment against those. Obviously my hospital can't pay to save my house. And the FRWA, the final product they gave us didn't really lay out that. They did us an analysis by parcel. So I'm comfortable with the other number, but they'll actually look at those too. But it's more so for our 15 plus commercial parcels. So we make sure that we have the firm legal standing that whatever number we decide on for their assessment is, stands up in court as well as a part of this. I don't think we ever made clear is that once the resolution goes out, just like with our assessments, there's an ability for any resident to come, contestant, say, hey, why, this is why, blah, blah, blah. So we gotta make sure we have that, that right word and establish that part. And that would be written to the, the resolution, what the process would be for that annually to come protest their assessment. So after Thursday, we'll have some discussions, uh, with the team here as well as legal. And we'll move forward that way on that product and, um.
How many, how many commercial do we have?
Fifty-five, that's okay. That's right, yeah. Yeah, and there's, there's some, they end up being because of what they are, very separate to the 2700. I mean, there's a few that are just, basically produce less. But there are some that will not definitely be 2700. So we need to make sure that's, that's squared away. What I foresee for sure is the acquiring outside party, third party. And our legal counsel has some contacts north of us to do a deep dive into assessing the commercial as well as our other parcels. Make sure the number is legally fine.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get that information Thursday once we discuss this. But I definitely foresee coming back to y'all probably in the, it's not calling a special meeting, waiting till March to come back with the resolution. We have a draft, we have the language. I'll, I'll float that out to y'all for after Thursday when we refine. It basically outlines everything we've been talking about. The 15 years, payback, the assessment, what we will do, what we won't do. But we just gotta codify it into one document because that's the foundational document moving forward regardless of getting any seats here that everyone will refer back to to say, why, why are you charging X? This is why, this is how you pay it, this is when you pay it. That's the process. Start.
There, there is a, you know, just starting from first principles. I know we had a big long lesson our last time that we saw each other, but you know, our ability to do special assessments is different than our ability for general maintenance assessments, right? That we do every year. We do not have home rule authority as a district. So we operate under what's called Dylan's rule, which means short way of saying we have to go find our authority to do something in our code, right? Our code is the Highlands County ordinances and the particular section that authorize, the hard code that authorizes us to assess special assessments is in section 9-132 of our code, right? That section of our code requires us to follow chapter 170 Florida statutes for implementation of special assessments, right? Chapter 170 requires, as Boss pointed out, that we're past resolution. There are very specific things that need to be contained in that resolution. There's a whole process of publishing the assessment goals publicly, right? For each parcel that will be assessed, we have to publish publicly exactly what the amount, what the assessment is per lot. Eventually, as Boss pointed out, there's another public hearing. You all sit, it's essentially a board adjustment where members of the public will be able to come to you, you know, ask for reduction in their assessment. What I'm laying out is a very lengthy process that will play out over the course of this. It starts on Thursday, myself and Wade Post, managing partner of our firm. We're both going to be here at the district and we are going to sit down and go through everything from step one. We're going to make sure that our existing obligations on our wastewater treatment plant won't impact our ability to get whole SRF ones with the state, which we're confident now that there aren't any. We're just going to double check that. But we are going to create a plan essentially over the next many months to really solidify what the assessments need to be. Because doing special assessments, you have to essentially only assess what the benefit derived from the property is. As Boss pointed out, every client of ours retains an expert to produce that figure. Because eventually if someone challenges the assessment, it's a lot easier to go to court with an expert witness with a published document that'll stand up, right? So we jumped the gun a little bit on authorizing the $2,700 assessment. We're going to work through the practicalities of this on Thursday, right? What do we do right now with all the mailings going out and whatnot? So we will, we'll be able to give direction staff on Thursday of all that. But, uh, it, it's, it's good that we caught this now rather than, you know, six or seven months down the road. But, um, you know, it's, we have clear direction, we have clear authority in our code and, uh, we're going to, we're going to do it right. And, uh, everything should be, stay okay with, with our assessments. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Is this going to impact our timeline?
We're still doing preparation items with the current utility fund and we'll discuss here in a few seconds. So there's still stuff that'll happen. I think the clarification or just make sure we're all talking.
No, does it impact state?
It'll, it'll impact when we get the loan, yes or no? Because part of the loan requirement is a firm resolution, which will be forthcoming. So it will impact that. It will not impact what's ongoing now as well as into the near future of, of other things that we have to do for that area to get ready for a landing. We have the authority, it's unquestionable. There's a process, we're following it, we will continue to follow it. There's some refined products that we got back from our paid consultant that wasn't able to satisfy, and I agree with it, satisfied firm official standing when it comes to our commercial parcels and others. We didn't get that back from the FRWA codes. So we're needing this second council to discuss that, to lock that.
So it's mainly commercial?
Well, it's a big commercial, but I want them also, we're going to pay them to verify that the 2,700 is totally above board and makes sense. Everyone's getting the benefit of that, so.
And I, and I don't anticipate it'll, it'll hamper the timeline at all. I mean, we're very, very early in the actual funding component of all this. So we're well within our timeline and we're going to, like I said, we're going to have it all hands on deck meeting on Thursday so we can lay out and know exactly, you know, where we're at within this year of one week to expect to have this all sorted out. So I don't anticipate it.
Okay.
Uh, to this point, so environmental survey was conducted and the results there, this is the initial environmental that helped set the stage for that area. That type of terrain we're dealing with out there, it's done by a local ITCN C bring here. They do a lot of environmental projects. So all this will continue to feed the process. What we basically identified, this is the basic area. That's Renata, that street to the north. See Schumacher at the bottom there. And just off the page to the right would be Cortez and Palermo. So it gives you your reference points and then obviously Dalbo is way out in the west. Not a lot of issues, the terrain is acceptable, so that was confirmed. What the initial survey gathered for us is that there's no scrub jig. Good. That saves us a lot of mess. The area, the area is not suitable for the scrubber, so we're good there. We, there wasn't a direct observation for either sking, Florida sking or Florida over tortoise that we would be concerned with. But the recommendation was to get the, or expert opinion for additional cost, and we will, for an intensive survey for both of those to confirm either tracks or holes or nests or whatnot. And then we'll be able to identify to a GPS location if there needs to be a relocation location of any of these. So good news up front, good. The, the main cost that we could see potentially is the go for tortoise relocation. Kind of knew that was coming. That happens to a lot of our developers. So we'll start working towards that effect. But based on the size, based on the terrain, based on the initial walkthrough, the estimate right there is 10 to 25 max until the experts get out there and start looking for the actual nests and so on.
So are we going to do a more intensive survey?
Yes. So put in there 3,000, they get to go for folks here, go for tortoise folks here, and 3,500 to Florida sking folks. And we'll get them working and get out there and do what they need to do for us to give us the official state approved survey with results that we can include in our packets.
Wow, wow.
The street location of 70 to 170,000. If we put in this tortoise, that's a cost.
I'll show you the next slide.
Thank you.
So tied to that, we knew this was coming not only for regular development, but also tied to the potential of this project here. Relocation is a big effort that we have basically outsourced to developers. They've been struggling and slows down development. Since this is a development that we are going to take on, we are now in the same seat as then. So this is the parcel that we reached out to the state after, the state folks, the environmental. This is the north entrance to Sunlake. You have Cortez, not Cortez, Honsa León, the sign, that's the Ovalter restaurant across the street. You have, it hits Menorca, then Menorca turns into Columbus. So you have this little segment that we own that parcel. Undeveloped, unutilized, zoned, basically residential slash commercial to some cases. The terrain, not the best. You see a big chunk there, it's a lot of wetland and so on. We provide this information to the state, their initial readback, this is their product. They came back to the bulk of this area in green, anything in color, it meets their criteria as a potential reservation for these go for tortoise. They are interested. They want to come do a more detailed survey to confirm that we could be a host site, a host facility. And if that happens, then you see a timeline that it'll take to get a state permit to establish. We have agents locally here that we would have basically on call, a contract that with the district. This is the actual person that helps house tortoise, gets it established and then checks on it on a regular basis. So if I made a full-time stack person, I can outsource this as a contractor. There will be some maintenance, ongoing maintenance costs that we would, as a district, have to take on if we went down this road. Some silk fencing, just for reference, when you place a tortoise in a location, you have to provide a silk fence like you do for construction to maintain their area so they don't wander. They're getting used to the area. Then once their, their patterns are set up, the fence comes down and then you go set another. So that would have to be what the agent as well as our staff would do. There's some internal clearing of some land. And I say clearing, opening up some land so they can get the proper vegetation and so on. So there's some, there is some ongoing cost to this. If we say, yes, we want to be one, a, a host site. The state will take a, depending on the size that we get permitted for, as well as the, the amount of tortoises we can accept, that's that range under cost. The state will get a chunk of the funds for us becoming a host site. If we do most of the work, i.e. the, the agent, we do the work for the land, we put the silk fences in, that number goes down to that 350 per tortoise. That's what we pay the state. We get tortoise, we pay the state 350. The other money, X, that's up to us as a district to charge as a host facility. And right now, that range regionally as well as in Florida is between $5 to $75 per tortoise. That's the fee that these developers are paying to relocate a tortoise owner. So if we become the site, we're not physically moving the tortoises, the developers still have to hire that person to do that. We're just accepting tortoise. If we identify the site, it meets criteria, it makes sense. We want to make it a preserve that is often to develop in the future. Then we become a host location, we can take up 250 tortoises and just doing a generic $5,000 per tortoise for our cost of running this operation. There's some revenue potential here about 1.25 million to our district. Not a total, that's a total. If they dump 250 tortoises this year, that's what it would be. And then as that agent monitors the tortoises, they either die off to move out of that area for whatever reason, then we're able to accept more, we're gapping out. That's what that agent.
Why is that number right in corner excluded?
The, uh, the part 127 is owned by the doctor, it's, it's basically a retention pond. So we're having discussions, we can't use it for tortoises, it's kind of a dead space. The area right next to, because that's a retention pond, that's kind of like a wetlander. So for tortoises, it's.
Either way, we have to move the tortoises that are out.
Oh, yes, sir. Either way, we're doing that ourselves.
Right, we have to move it either way. We have to create a place, one way or the other.
We either create a place or go to that, go to one of these already established places and us pay the $5,000. So.
So when do we decide on this, or if we, are we excited?
Well, uh, what, the only two I have right now is the state coming back to me and confirming when they go walkthrough that this is, we need the acreage requirement for acres, which we do. They'll walk around, they'll give us a final assessment and then they'll tell me what the term pond, trying to get a permit is. Once I get that, I'll bring it to y'all to say, do we want to make this a preserve for tortoises for not only the region, literally for the region? And as you see in this map, other than a couple up there in Frostproof, there is nothing around us. That's by developers. And all these are at max capacity, the ones I'm showing here. They can't accept tortoises. So we're having, developers, not only us, developers are having to go north of Orlando into Jacksonville area to find a preserve. That cost gets increased and so on. So by us opening up one, it's a, it helps the environment, it helps.
We have about 50 out there, is that what our guess is?
We have about 30 where we're going to build, but we know there's probably about 30 to 50 of the unit 12 that would be looking for another home.
Okay, so we have to move about 60 into transportation and then we can still have that roof for another 100.
Yes, sir. So let's take the next step, bring it back. The only downside I see, you can think of the downside, we would have to put this land in conservation use for 50 years here. So once we lock that in, no boards could change that except after 50 years. It's with an agreement with the state, it's locked in.
If anybody want to try to develop it, maybe I'll go move all the tortoises.
Yes, yes. The downside, you can look at that, we're, we're taking a chunk of land, and we have a lot, so it's not a big loss. We're taking a chunk of land off the potential for development. The reality is the state owns all the land. The state and the county owns all that land in the green right by the purple. All that land to the west, Columbus, is already a state preserve for structure. So if, if we don't do this, the state will continue to press us every year and say, we need to buy the rest of your land to add to our preserve. So they're going to do it. And for tortoises, they're going to do it. Because no one can develop that area right now because of the conservation. It's really not taking a lot, it's off the table for us.
Right, no.
But it produces a revenue generation that's at minimum cost. And now even with the agent and our staff, our roads and maintenance guys going in there and helping out on a recurring basis, it's probably less than $10,000 to $15,000 a year for us. But, you know, we're getting over $90,000.
But you're, you're 12k proceeding.
Until they have the tortoises. Yes, sir, you're right.
And you're 12, at least, what could be a year.
This could be, for us, we can get permits, yes, sir.
But we'll know, yeah, we'll know more after they come back and lock it. Okay.
If they find this is acceptable, then they can expedite permits. Because the challenge they've had at the pass is they're trying, they're challenged with the permits because multiple people own the land and they're trying to make it attractive. Here, one person owns it, they're dealing with the government, it's expedited automatically, it's government to government, so.
Is it scheduled? Yes, it's been scheduled?
Yes, sir. There, there, I think two weeks from now, they're. So that's, that's tied to the wastewater a little bit. More so giving you a heads up that I'd say by, by March, I'll be bringing a, a resolution for approval that we can just make this conservation, create a Sunlake Tortoise Preserve and then it's established, we monitor it and we become a host site. Okay?
Okay. Any public comment? The next item is a motion, discussion, a motion to preserve the land acquisition for the district long-range plans.
So we had this discussion at the last meeting, board meeting, uh, Monday. You all gave some directives of what to pursue and not, I believe, yes, we have the parcel that was next to the district office. My, after getting received guidance, we went out and we discussed producing an offer to that parcel. There's no map, sorry, because I, we had it on the agenda, I was going to strike it, but the person is here that wanted to speak to it.
Okay.
So this parcel right next to the district office across the street. We, in my initial negotiations, I put out a number, got a counter. Realtors here, if you want to speak, Pete, discuss more in detail or? I'm sorry, I'm looking at you here now. No, Pete's not here. Is there, is the one here at the parcel? Okay. Did I stand correct? So that said, uh, we put, we put an offer out of 220 to see their interest. They listed it at 325. Initially, when we talked, I said one was for a half million, one was for a million. Their hard number was 325, we do it out of offer 220. And I went, basically came with 220. The assessed value of the land is 180, accounting. There's some 2023 taxes. It's undeveloped, it is commercial. So after doing some analysis there, the, the best that I was willing to recommend was 220 number. Their counter came back to 262. So that's for that land, it's commercial zone. The only plans that we as a district might have, and it's not even on the books now, is potential growth of the district office, the parking, the drive. That's all, and maybe overflow from the clubhouse. That's the only plans that we have in the future. It's available, it's been available. If you want me to continue discussing with that individual and come that, meet them somewhere else. That's the number that's on the table now. They will cover closing costs, they will cover taxes, they cover all this stuff. And it's basically 262. It would come out of our reserves. And it's basically 262, it would come out of our reserves, and then we acquire the land for distribution in the future. So the other discussion, nothing new on that, the other land that we talked about, that's the only one that came back and spoke to us. It's offered for discussion, if you all want me to. We have, but nothing came back on that one.
Well, this is the land on the opposite of Mr. Go.
Corner of the circle, yes, sir.
I think we would fire. I think so too.
You agree? You agree? That we don't like, like a filling station. Yeah.
I think we need to control.
I do too.
Okay. Continue negotiation.
Please.
Get numbered to, we know they're numbered. So continue negotiation, can I get directive that if we come to a settlement, knowing that I'm numbered, we come to a settlement, we can just, we can just lock it in and bring it to the final group? Well, there's been some comparable sold down the street, chunks of commercial land, very similar price. Not a lot of it's moving. No one's really building any new commercial.
You said down the street, you mean toward?
Towards, sorry, towards 27, yes, sir. You know, it's valuable to whatever the person adds for ideas to develop it. And for us being so close to the proximity of district resources, it makes a lot of sense to get positive control.
I think we need to control.
I do too.
So consensus?
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine with that.
Me too.
And hopefully bring back to you, you know, before the meeting here at the, the final agreement that.
Okay.
So that one.
Okay.
Does somebody want to speak to that? Oh, you said he, not he. He was the one.
No, he's not here, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
All right. Actual items.
Yeah, there was the letter from the resident man 20, I believe.
Okay, yeah. From Tanglewood.
Speaking of communications, can you respond to? Mr. Hummel's email that he sent to all of us, can we respond to take care of that?
About debating of Schumacher.
Well, I've responded, but also we're still, we're continuing to assess the county. Really nothing new on our part, other than.
No, I just don't know if we respond. He sent the email to all of us, I just don't know if we responded to that.
Yeah, I'd have to confirm, I'd have to check, because I usually do a speech, usually I see a status comment, but. It's not a, we'll chat with him after this, okay, email. Yeah, now we can chat about it. Let me make sure we're all on the same page. Where we're leaving to this special on Schumacher is that there is the appetite of the county wanting to complete it all the way through on their end. Their cost would possibly us giving them some reservoir access on the front, which is acceptable. There are more going down the road of if they do that in the timeframe of us eating it for our waste water facility, would we have any interest to take over Sunlight Boulevard collectively and then we own it?
Yeah. Yes.
Because then we're fixing it anyway. We're making it anyway. They're in a damn amount of county line going towards that.
Nope.
So for that, good on that, it's kind of the points. If that's, that's the only update that I would say is that's where we're staying with the county. They'll do that quicker than expected. We would come up with a resolution that divest Sunlight Boulevard back to our full control.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
That's how I will respond.
Yes, that's a real good thing. Okay.
I think part of your petitions, the only thing we got to receive from the hospital, and there's no product, it was basically a phone call, is that they're wanting at their cost to put in speed bumps along that backside of the road that they, we control it. We don't use it, there's no residents on there, there's very little human participation on our behalf as far as residents. But a lot of people use it to cut past the hospital or other parts of us. They want to put their own speed bumps in, they install it, they pay, they maintain it. I'll come up with an agreement, Eric will review it, that as the years go on, they will be responsible for fixing that, not us. And we did do a speed counter. It's in your packet there. There's, you know, massive amounts of speeding down that little road. So it's a total safety thing that breaks the earth for our, that we would have to go. Regardless, they're wanting to do it at their control so they can get it done very quickly. So contrary to what we do with speed bumps, I don't need a, there's no citizens there, I don't need a citizen's. They've asked for it, they're going to do it. So I just need you guys to say you're fine with doing that, with the collaboration, we can get this done.
I agree. No problem.
And tied to that in your packet are the surveys. So I know the district policy has been, we entertain the idea of speed bump after a petition and then the speed machine goes out there. We have been getting a lot of petitions, I've been getting individual comments, commentary complaints. But we have placed the speed machine in that map on your thing at those, sorry, I picked the wrong color. The yellow stars that's on that map. So the speed machine has been moving around the district every week for a period of time of major areas to get analysis done, basically help citizens identify if a petition is needed or not. What we are finding, there's a bunch of petitions in there, or not petitions, speed machine re-readings. What we're finding is that majority of the machines thread, thread less than 20% over the speed limit. Our state mandate is usually 20, 25% that we will, I will recommend to people to speed bump it. Very few are meeting that criteria other than the hospital little room. But we're going to continue moving the machine around and as citizens, the citizens out there, if they are more interested in pursuing a speed bump, even if the data of the speed machine does not meet criteria, my recommendation to them is continue with petition, public comments, come to these meetings, and explain their concern to y'all face to face. We got to get it black and white as possible in the district office, it doesn't meet criteria. If you don't order it, I'm not going to be a thrown out speed bump, it's all over the place. We are working with sheriff, we are working with our own security. We are figuring out areas where we as a district feel there needs to be speed bumps. Based on our analysis, regardless of the citizen commentary. So we're going to continue down those initiatives, but if a citizen group collective wants a specific speed bump, y'all just need to go through the process, well, we do that process, to get before this board because even if it's 5% speeding over the limit, if you have a firm enough discussion argument, they'll direct me to do it, and we'll do it all day long. So let's understand on that, on those speed bumps. The only one is golf, sorry, hospital.
Hospital.
Okay.
Okay. Staff reports. Any public, any public comment on that? Okay, staff reports. Clubhouse and golf.
Good morning supervisors. Real quick, finally going to get some weather towards the end this week and next week. We're air to gas today, try to get all 36 of them done by the end of the week. We did top dress last week, I'm going to top dress 1 through 4 again tomorrow morning. Basic maintenance, trying to get all the ornamental dresses trimmed up and going to try to finish 14 rip rap hopefully this week. It's been kind of busy, so trying to stay out of the way there. We'll start our pre-emergent next week as well and start slicing all the tees and greens slopes next week as well. We did compacted areas around all the car paths and we're just going to continue to get into the compacted areas around the tees and greens. We did complete the bulkhead on number 18. Want to ask you all a quick question about that. I painted all the top of the bulkheads red to try to preserve the wood as long as we could if it's lateral hazard. I didn't know whether you guys want to stay with stakes or whether you guys would like to go ahead and paint the bulkhead. It would help protect it a little bit longer.
On 18?
The wood, yeah. We replaced all the wood cap, the cap around the bulkhead. And as you noticed last time, it all started buckling and with the weather and everything. So usually when we'd go back and paint the top of them red and that way you didn't have to have the stakes and it's a lateral hazard.
That's okay with me. Yeah.
I think it'll help preserve them.
Yeah.
And then we're going to move over and do number one as well. Start replacing that cap on turtle.
Yeah.
So we did get all the big trees down that we have behind four. We had a couple on 15, at 14, got the big pond down. So until now, we're. Excuse me?
I know, okay, we need to do all that garbage collection or tree collection that we do behind. I have two, I'm sorry. Between one, between one and nine?
So we're going to try to get all that mulched up. Last time we went in there with the skid steer and shredded it all and then try to flatten it back out.
Yep. We dumped some dirt there yesterday too.
That was from the Columbus for the.
I thought that was for the progress.
So again, I mean, when we get into the greens construction, we're going to try to save all of our dirt. We've talked about trying to rebuild or fighting them, gold tee on number one. I know we've talked in the past. Yes, sir, number six bunker and then number three bunker on turtle, shorten it up as well. So other than that, just trying to work on our flow chart a little bit more. Just, you know, I'll sit down with Boz on that. The biggest thing is, is like, once we get, have a better feel of it, you know, but there's going to be a lot of moving parts in that. I mean, the best thing for us to do is get away as quick as we can and then, you know.
I argue with you a little bit on the timeline. You've done, you've said you put four courses before.
Yes, sir.
You should have a pretty good idea of exactly how long it takes you to do each one of those steps.
Yeah, about, I mean, new construction is different than a welling out. I mean, everything we did was all new construction. Basically, we could go in with the doser and well them out. We didn't have to worry about, I mean, honestly, in a week, I mean, I found having the front line welded out in a week. It's just a matter of, you know, you got to, like I said, I tried to explain the process with the staking and everything and then working the sub. But my goal was to get it done as quick as we can.
I understand that, but we need the timeline so that we can, all of us can counter. Because if there's a problem, we need to get on it and we need to get it on it quickly because we're not going to fail at this.
We're not going to fail, sure. The whole, I mean, the whole thing is, is like I said, getting everybody acclimated on what their jobs are going to be. I mean, you know, one thing, one thing I would like you to consider is that how much money we are building these greens for. I mean, we're saving a lot of money on it. And the main thing is, is that, you know, we've, we've had a couple of people approach us that want to help us and, you know, I'm going to try to get them to help us, but most of the payroll is going to be, we already have people in our payroll for the years that we're going to be using our own people outside of maybe bringing on a lecture people to haul. People that actually have a CDL that can drive a ton, ton dump truck on the road without having any liability. That's, that's my main concern at every stage on, in the parking, they're going to drive, it's a big truck. You were in construction, you know how big they are. An off-road truck is big. And I just want somebody that can do it without damaging anything else on the golf course. So it just takes a little bit of extra effort to.
Plan, Jimmy, that's the plan. You're the one that's got to execute.
And I will.
And all I'm saying.
Yeah, and really, I'm.
That should include that ever, whatever cost.
It is, it is.
Okay, then.
Yes. I mean, my, my goal is to come under the budget. I mean, that's what we really want to do, but I mean, we're going to build them. Everything's already accounted for. The prices are flexing a little bit with the delivery on the rock and stuff. So if fuel can get down, we'll save a little bit more money there. I have everything, all the greens are broke down, is how far material it's going to take for the rock, material that's for the dirt. I can give you all those costs, that's the thing that's going to be, how long it actually takes our people. I mean, our people aren't that experienced in building greens. I mean.
I understand that. I'm arguing that. I mean. You had, you had to have had some idea in order to come up with a timeframe that said you're.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I'm saying, you've got the knowledge, put it in a timeline so that we can see is, are we being met? And if not, what do we have to do in order for the timeline to be met? I don't want to roll into next.
We're not going to.
Well, it's easy to say it, but if you don't monitor it, you know when you got a problem. That's all I'm asking. That's what I'm asking for.
I, yes, we'll produce that for you.
All right.
When are we starting?
May 6th.
Yes, sir. So my goal is to punch turtle before we even start the construction. So we're going to do that April 29th. And then May 6th, I'll paint them out Friday before. Come May 6th, we'll go out with our saw cutter, I'll paint them out to get the sawed out and then we'll start basically shelling immediately.
Let me ask you a question, Dr.
Well.
Are we going to be okay?
Yes, sir. I mean.
If you're ready, I'll have a piece of pride. I mean, shrug your shoulders, it's no good, right? Will you agree on that?
I, I mean, I wrote it this morning, Ray, there's some spots on them. I mean, to say it's crap, I mean, I wouldn't say it's that. I mean, that's just my opinion.
I mean, it's not acceptable, let's put it that way. And I'm saying, we're going to spend a half million, whatever it is, to do. That'd be a basis in next year with Earl, or is it going to be?
I, I think you have to have a plan in the future to rebuild those greens properly. I mean, we're going to.
Well, that's fine, you guys can submit that to the board when we talk about future.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Definitely be together.
Yes, it does.
Next year, am I going to have 36 holes or is it going to have 36 holes and play 43? Nice word.
You know, I'd love to share as many articles for people that are in this business, whether it's GCSAA, whether it's PGA, everybody in South Florida that's been dealing with El Nino. You know, you can sit and point fingers however you want. I can tell you guys that spend $2 million on golf courses a year for 18 holes that are having some of the same issues that we're having dealing with the greens. I mean, you try, you, you look at an Aminac, you try to plan off, get it healthy as you can, but you can't control no sunlight, right? I mean, the sunlight's what starves the green. You can't go through photosynthesis, it's what's starving them.
We had that reason.
I'm not going to say you haven't, but you didn't go through El Nino either, like.
Exactly.
Five years ago. I tell Nino, I'll tell him about these things.
All right.
I mean, I go up with greens.
I'll do my best to answer this. We're going to, we're going to pair fine more aggressively this year, we're going to put bigger holes, we're going to try to.
I mean, I just said it, what we had in the office, what we have now, it'll just save the same cost. We were so proud of ourselves, we were proud of you last summer.
All right, moving on. Just one last update on the greens renovation from the last meeting to this meeting. We did move our August tournament into September. So we did, in fact, give us a few more weeks to not only complete the renovation of the greens, but also get our summer maintenance practices done on turtle as well. So those tournaments are, the tournament is 9-7 and 9-8, and the final will be 9-14. So that does pass some more time. The expected open date of deer would be 9-5 as a reopening slash member day before we go into that.
Would you say it's a tournament?
Certain tournament, 9-7 and 9-8. That is a Saturday, Sunday, I assume, if I got that correct.
Is Labor Day the first month?
It'll be the first, September 1st. So that was part of the discussion, that is the week after I have a.
Well, tied to this being an infrastructure project, let's relay out the timeline for construction of the course. We will refresh our timeline for all the events, compliments of us, refresh that because there's going to be a big void. If that's not doing anything on that course, so we'll update that, get that to y'all as well.
Are you planning on leaving 9-0, the back end open until you move there?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have the back end deer open until, it'll be kind of an open deal. So we'll leave the back end deer open until we're ready to move over there to start that construction. So we'll leave the back end deer open until we're ready to move over there to start that construction. Obviously, that timeline, it may be an extra week or two, but we'll leave it open. We can do nine hole loops or nine hole rounds, whatever we want to do it, but yeah, that is the plan. All right, moving into golf hops for your January wrap-up. Obviously, you know, we've had discussions about the weather, but obviously December or January were the cloudiest months in 84 years, I believe, the Golf Channel or the Weather Channel. So obviously, that did affect our play as well because we had a lot of rain, more rain than a typical year. So that obviously did affect revenues. Not so much in January. January, we actually came out fairly good, but we did have some, some rainouts. I will, I want to staff that February was a little worse. You know, and, and in our operation, it's, it's not so much how much it rained, it's more what rains. So in February, we had, we had two complete rainouts on Sundays, which, you know, if you followed along the last few years, obviously Sundays are a revenue generating day on the golf course. So having full day rainouts on Sundays really affects our numbers pretty heavily. But we've been okay in January. The days that it rained, it does, but not quite as bad. As you can see, member rounds were up in January by 6% on our outing rounds, which is, it's up 4%, but basically it's the same tournament we had last year. They just had six more. So pretty flat. Public rounds were down 6%. I, I believe that, you know, some of that is definitely due to weather, but in the past, you can always have a correlation. When member rounds go up, public rounds go down. It's not necessarily a direct correlation. But obviously, if the members are playing more, there's less rounds to sell to the public. So we do see that. Overall, our green tree revenue is only down 4% year over year. Obviously, that's coming up short of budget. But in our situation with the weather, I think that we fare okay. Correlating with that, the driving range revenue was down 9% as well. Obviously, with public rounds down, our, our pro shop revenue is down too. So that was down 15% year over year. On the membership side, I changed this number. So typically, I was giving you the deferred revenue side of the membership revenue, but as a board and working with Mr. Boz, we changed it to actual revenue. So that number that is in there, that 47, 570 for membership, that is actual memberships sold in January. That is not deferred revenue from throughout the year. Just wanted to let you know that. So it is a 20% increase year over year. And I do have those numbers. So typically in January, the memberships that we're selling is our three-month memberships. It's the last, is our last push on that. Which we sold 15 three-month memberships. And those all kind of come in by January 15th. We did sell two five-month memberships, two junior memberships, one family membership and one executive single membership. That's why that number did go up a little bit. I would say that typically January is at the end of our cycle, usually starts in September and January is when it ends. Doesn't mean we stop getting memberships, but that's just the way that works out. So we'll get a few memberships. We'll have our summer membership drive in the summer, but it'll be a little more sparse than this time of year. One big note that I wanted to update, it was kind of, it happened very fast. So I did notify Boz about it, but we, we did get selected for a commercial shoot, which is going to occur today. A turtle run, hole number one. It's going to happen around 2:00. It is a company, I believe they're out of Iowa, and they're shooting a commercial for some chiropractic company that is going to be aired on the Golf Channel 27 times the week of the Masters. So we're going to, Sunnet Lake is going to have, you know, a little blur button there that says, we hosted this commercial. Hole number one. So. So it's, it's, it's going to be a fairway shot. They're not going to be on the green. There will be a flyover. It's not going to, it's not going to occur. They're going to be doing fairway stuff. It's not, the commercial is not necessarily about the golf course. It's about, it's about what they're advertising, which is a chiropractic commercial.
We're going to have signs out there that say something about Sunnet Lake.
It'll, it'll, it'll be, it'll work out just fine. So they're actually, they, they paid us for that time slot. And we're actually, we're going to move our Twilight off to start on number, hole number three. So it works out just fine for our operational standpoint. We're actually, we're actually going to gain revenue for that. So that's going to be good. And they're, and they're going to give us some stuff on that too. So we'll, we'll have some flyover. We're going to fly over of hole number one and two that we can use for our intensive purposes as well. But in, in all that situation, we'll, we'll be able to navigate through all of that. It's happening today at 2:00. So I'll be out there with them to, to kind of direct any traffic that needs to be out there. But there'll be, it'll be, it was the best choice for what we had to navigate with all of our play because obviously it's our busy time here. So for us to close down the first hole and redirect our play to number three during Twilight, it was a simple, simple fix.
And that's going to be on number one, and it's a fairway shot because it's chiropractic. Is there going to be anything that says Sunnet Lake? Or they're just going to put a Sunnet Lake banner?
Yeah, they, they, they have informed me that they will put a ticker that'll, you know.
And they're doing this with a drone?
They'll have a drone, but they're actually going to have a, they're going to have, they have an actor. They're going to have a, you know, they're going to have discussion and stuff like that as well.
Well, no. The, the middle of the fairway between the two bunkers there is not bad.
No, the, the hole will be, it'll be fine. And, you know, we're supposed to, they should be on property. Texted me yet, but she's going to be on property here sometime this, and we're going to go out and we'll check that out. If for some reason it doesn't work, then we'll obviously navigate that. If we move number three, we'll, we'll move to number three. I just, as far as the shot goes with overhead drone, in, in my opinion, I think the, the water shot thing will, would look really, really good. I'm sure it'll, it'll come out just fine.
Okay. Yep.
Literally a cold call. She said she called 20 properties in Florida and I was the only one that called her back. So that's how that happened.
Well, 20, I like having Sunnet Lake during the Masters week. Well, middle of the fairway between those two bunkers will be okay.
It'll, it'll, it'll work out.
It'll work.
Moving on to the restaurant side, the restaurant performed very well in January. 8% increase in, in food sales, 4% increase in beverage sales, 7% increase in total sales, 4% increase in total served. So restaurant was performed very well in January. There's just a couple of notes, some upcoming events that I wanted to inform the board about. We do have our MGA member guest, which we discussed earlier, and they, they have. Third, that will close the restaurant for that event. We do have the, the TGA, that's the Tanglewood Golf Association. They do our banquet every year. The good news is they do it on a Sunday night. So we actually aren't really closing down for anything because we closed at 3:30 anyway. So that, that's a big win for us there. The Last Blast Dinner, I put a question mark on the whole building. Obviously, that depends on how many players we get. So we will know, you know, within the next, you know, few weeks here if we need to accommodate that or not. The Best Blast Banquet, we've done that for several years now. Done events, probably the biggest event that we do. And that is on March 30th. And that where we're part of the whole building. Then obviously our Easter buffet, which is another one of our biggest events for the year. So 32 banquets in 31 days. So we are going to be very busy in, in March.
28, 29, 30, 31. We're going to have need roller skates.
Yes, we are, we're going to be tied. All right, that's all I got. Any questions?
Question?
On the Best Blast Dinner, how, how was that received?
All of the information, so, so I don't have the exact number, which I'd be happy to forward to you, how many entrees we serve, but I know it's the most that we have done. It was quite a bit more than, than last year. I would say it was in the 15 range, but don't quote me. Feedback that I got from that was fantastic. I'm happy to speak to anybody that says it's different, but the food, you know, is the building at one time and the, and the plate and service time was very quick.
It wasn't fantastic, but it was better than the rest. But now I can understand that the women's event that you just had, that the cakes were excellent, the other meal was excellent.
Oh, it was excellent.
And so who knows for that because you finally got the right quality food.
Yeah, we, we changed up some things. We had some meetings with both the MGA and LGA and WGA. And we had those discussions to, to see what we could do that they would like more. And I think we finally hit on something. So we're going to stick with that.
Let me ask you about the the last four months of the fiscal year. You're planning to lose $31,000 of the rest. What, if anything, we're looking at.
So when you're looking at that paper, just bear in mind that that includes all of our, our, our overhead costs and things that are, that are fixed. So, correct. So there's a, there's a lot of different numbers in there that fluctuate with that. Obviously, I probably, every restaurant in this county is going to lose money in those last four months of the year. It's, it's obviously off-season. But obviously, we're going to try to navigate through that. The best, I think our, our summers the last few years have, have improved. And I think we can build on that and.
You're planning to, you're planning to add the year to the $20,000, $130,000 that's coming in the next four months. We go status quo like we do every year, you're going to lose $130,000. And I'm saying, Dan, is there nothing we can do to see that number improve dramatically? Or be a funding closing? Well, I don't know what the answer is on it. I'm sure there's something we can do so we don't have to see this. So that's my challenge to you and to Boz. I think you guys would have come up with a plan. That's the difference from what we've been doing in the past, like what we've been doing in the past, right? It's not working.
Yeah, you know, we've had this discussion before. Obviously, if you look at your direct F and B revenue, your direct F and B labor and your direct F and B expenses. It's, it's not as bad as it appears. When you start adding the admin costs in there of, you know, all the course maintenance. We have all the electricity and stuff that covers both golf, restaurant, tennis courts, some other things that are in there. There's a lot of admin fees in there that actually start to drag that number down. Now, I have, I have been working with Boz and we have done some things with that that, that should make that number improve. We have already started those sessions and obviously we will continue to have them. But in the off-season, that number, I don't know what dramatic means to you, but that number will continue to improve. I don't know, $100,000, that's dramatic, but I think in the 10s, $20,000 to $30,000 over time is, is very realistic.
I'm just saying. I mean, you could do something. I mean, there's a million things to do that. Entertainment, because nobody's here. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be done, but every year, I'm doing it. And I'm now trying to get ahead of it, saying, okay, this is the end of it where we got to get our act together. Try something to improve.
I, in the idea of closing on Mondays or reducing some of those other things, that will not create dramatic increase that you're looking for. Growing the business, growing the business is going to be the way to get out of it. I, I think last, was the first summer that we didn't close on a Monday. And I'm worried all of that, and I think it was positive.
Why do we ever use incentives? We don't use incentives at all. Buy one, get one. Two, two, three, one, entrees. Or the positive night is one occasion where you got two for 20, or was 20, I don't think it's 20.
It's 25.
Something that would drive.
We, we, you know, we do. We have our, we do a lot of promos and things like that and.
You don't have.
We, and it, back to the point, I think Boz has had some discussions on some of the promos that we're going to do this. That I, I think we'll see an increase in that. But to the same point, I, I think going lower on prices to get folks, yes, the increase in volume, but again, that's not the dramatic change that we're looking for. If, if, if we're bringing more people in the building to lose, to break even or lose money, it's, it's not a win. But we, we've had our discussions and we will continue to do that. It's definitely our goal to make that number better, I promise you.
I think that's what we're asking for. And I think all of us sitting on this board knows that those months for every restaurant are down months. And we all know that. We're not asking you to work a miracle here. We're just asking you to start working on some solutions.
And the trend, the trend over the last four years, kind of post-pandemic, if you will, have gotten better. That number has gone down. So we're, we're going to stay on that trend and we're, we're, you know, you can see the numbers were up 10 to 20% a lot of these months here. We're, we're working in the right direction. That, we're, we're changing that profile on the bottom line for sure.
Okay. I'm not very, I will say, let's go to golf. Nice. Should I topic? Yes. At the, at the end of the discussion, if you want to give any public comments.
Yeah, I'll call for public.
Let's go to golf. According to what I can see, the rounds are up about 1,300. And the average rate is sure up. So 81 cents. We had talked about, and you had talked about significantly more money per round. 81 cents. I, you know, it's the same. I went to look at this. Sorry, the weather. But the rounds are up, rounds are up.
Yeah, and the average rate is up. We're, we're looking, we're, you know, in that particular category, you're looking at, at, as a whole conglomerate number. If you break it down into all the categories and all the categories of the prices that we put together in the budget time, those numbers are there. All those increases are there. Those increases in the rounds that we're doing is, is in off-peak times. And those off-peak times, or, or even the nine-hole rates, if, if the nine-holeers all increase their rounds, that number drags that APR down big time. I mean, I mean, they're paying like $30, they're turning like $30 a round is. It's, if, if, if you see the breakdown of all the categories that are on the rate sheet, they're, those numbers are right on the money. The only thing that, that they're off by like 50 cents on a total, because it's something like if, if we have all the rainouts and we do a rain check, it drags that number down slightly, but they are as published in those categories. Which includes.
Let's let that stand for a bit.
Right.
I don't know. She wanted to know why.
If, if she played at 3:00 in the afternoon or he or she, she would, she, she played in the peak time.
It's the peak times.
Yeah.
Let me ask you one more question. Except you guys just need to break down the rate of the memberships. I mean, it looks to me like five months or three months. Memberships. That, in your opinion, is a bit more season issue or?
No, and, and do note that, that the three-month membership, the big time that we sell the three-month membership was in January. So it was not the number of which we sold 15 more. So I, I, yeah. Yeah, no, I understand. And that could be possible. Unless, unless I run down all the. Unless, unless I run down all the people that didn't join and ask them, that could be possible. Or it could be possible that they moved, or they joined in a different category, or they decided that they're not going to be here enough, they're not going to play enough, and they're going to pay greens fees. There could be a lot of plausible explanations. Again, unless I run down all those people and ask them, I mean, I think overall we were down 13 total. Was that?
At 18, you had 22, lost $70,000.
I was referring in terms of memberships. In the three months. Well, the three, well, we just sold 47,000 in January, which was more than last year, so that gap will close a little bit.
I'll wait for ladies' questions. Thank you.
Comments about the golf course and clubhouse? General comments? Public comments?
Ask a question here.
You have to get on VDO.
Pelski, 5568. I don't think it's odd.
Can you press the button on the top there?
I may have just, there's one on the top. Press that down if you would, please. Till you get a green light.
One, two, three? Is that better? 5568, my tennis, Paul Pelski. It was a question for Mike on really the, on I would view. I was wondering if there's a possibility to extend hours after events. I noticed this couple of pages, particularly on Friday with Rick's, Rick Arnold's group. I was part of that group, and we had a group of people at the end of it, which I think is set in about a third or something, somewhere around that. We probably had about a dozen people that wanted to stay. In fact, we quickly had order grounds and people buying around. Is there an opportunity here? And I don't know if it's other events where you can extend hours, hours or so, keep people that are drinking, eating, you know, have dinner. And by the way, the service was great, food was great. Will Sloate, because we had a large crowd that understood that. We'd like to come back more, we're encouraged to come back for more events. So just thought that you might explore this.
If, if we get a chance, after the, I'd like to have a discussion with you. Get that details.
Thank you.
They're not closing them down if you've got people.
That's why I need, I need to get more details because I'm going to follow up on that.
One of the problems that also continues, we've got a base, they're starting before the outfits. So the season, I'll tell the people. And by the time the golf is leaving the place, it's had Rick Arnold playing before. I was up there behind myself. Like 50 people, maybe there are 70. 50, 40, I don't know. And I think, I think we'd have to look at the timing of the events. You don't want to have them in start. You have the golfers still drinking, we have finishing up their rounds. Just, I'm throwing it out, just for the people. But I think, I think that's an issue that has to be addressed.
I'll take that. It's a, as we're trying to balance the timeframe a little bit, we just want to be there. But I'll take a look at that for sure.
And I got one more thing to give you. The newsletter that comes out, this may not be, it's maybe, you know, I'm not sure. It seems that Tanglewood has got to be a lot better. Entertainment. I mean, I look at what they have, it's beautiful compared to what we got. It's like, what part of, what part of us?
Yeah, I mean.
So my challenge to you guys, to some of them, would be, let's get our act together and pretend like we're the sync rock, we're not the middle rock.
No, I understand. There's a big difference in venues.
There's always a reason why we can't do so.
Right.
I'm fully aware, there's always an excuse. I happen to, I lose brothers, that's just me. I can tell when the tank was, you know, have action. Because having that kind of an act, a tank is, we have. Typically, a husband and wife. I mean, you just need to do that proper thing. And if you don't.
I think we're, I don't know if that's possible for us to perform in a restaurant, but we could do it in a different setting maybe.
There's always, there's always a possibility.
For sure.
And you know what? If you give it a try, it doesn't work, then I can say. If you give it a try, it works. That's what happens. I get it.
If I continue, I go to a lot of those venues. I go to Turn 2, I go to 301, I go to Tanglewood. Tanglewood possibly be accepting outsiders after this, I don't know if that's true or not. But one of the, and my wife works for Weinstein Center and takes care of the care and feeding of all the performers. As well as the fact that when those shows go on, we need one today. We've got Johnny Cash on Thursday. We've got 1,100, 1,200 people in that theater that are looking for a place to go. The advantage that you guys have here is that you have food, particularly during the week. That place closes up, I go out with a lot of them, there's no place to go. Turn 2 is probably the only one, and they never had food. So there's an opportunity to use the benefit you have, which is to an advantage which the others don't have. And you might want to look at those kinds of things. Because there's, I was happy to see what's going on if I went to you compared to, because it was added to my list, and obviously you're potentially go to it. Hours are limiting us from that standpoint. Gets better on the weekends, but certainly during the week. Wild Turkey's one of the two. They closed during the week as well, 9 o'clock at night. It shows her just ending at that point. And performers are looking to go someplace, pay for something. Something to think about.
Thank you. Anything else from golf? Clubhouse? General counsel?
Yes.
Good morning.
Just a quick update, a pretty lengthy discussion, discussion with our current outside counsel on the Avanti this past week. I had, I've had a chance now to review Doc with the case. As you all know, this case has been around since 2020. And there are certain things that are happening in the case. And I'll be very honest, I'm going to be vague here, just because I want to publicly discuss my internal thoughts about the case. But there are, frankly, there's challenges moving forward with this case that Mr. Rose described to me. He asked, jumped in and participated with him for, which we will do. We're planning on making our appearance in the case this week. There are several discovery-related things we need to take care of, both reducing discovery and actually pounding it, sending it out to the opposing side. Like I said, this case has been going on for four years. And that just occurred from our end two weeks ago, which is problematic. So we're going to jump in and hopefully fast-track some items, get this case back on track. I have some recommendations for our next meetings and action I can ask for you all. I'll privately discuss with all of you before the next meeting exactly what that is. But so our formal making appearance, and I'm happy to take any questions. But I recommend that we talk individually, privately, off meeting. On Thursday, like I said, Wade Postman, partner and I, will be at the district with Bos to get our special assessments on track, and welcome any of you that come and say, hey, join us to get, see what's going on. I anticipate, and I would refer to Bos on this, that following that meeting, there will be some public announcements regarding the current status of the assessments that were previously approved by the board. And exactly, that, maybe it would be worthwhile to publish some public timeline so folks know it's. I anticipate we'll have some answers on Thursday. And also, a pretty lengthy discussion with Oakland Pastures, the company that holds the bonds on many of the district's parcels. Buying some of that cause well, we got up to speed and came up with a plan around 400 outstanding properties without standing. So, you know, part of the district's agreement with Oakland Pastures that the district assists with covering those, doing those monies. That includes litigation, so some significant litigation moving. And I'll have regular updates for you all as that starts to occur.
Good.
We're very busy on this. So if you guys have any questions, feel free to contact me privately. And questions now, so.
I have one question, just maybe five should answer. We still have a problem with Tanglewood on that sign issue? That's the problem?
Well, we're, it is a problem. Garrett's been informed of it. We're trying to at the lower level before we send the lawyer letter. But yes, there's a problem with the agreement, right-of-way authority that we've given them, and what they're not allowing for all the businesses that are popping up along that road.
So Turn 2 is trying to.
Yeah, Turn 2, you've all got the new manufacturing home business back there. They're restricted. Obviously, my disagreement came out, there was nothing there. So it was treated as their own driveway. We have now commercial entities that are popping up all the way down there. And they're, they're not being good to post. So we're engaging, I'm with the manager, we're talking to corporate. And the next step is going to be, you know, looking how we adjust and cancel the contract and get it back in our deposit.
I would, yeah, I would do the agreement and immediately, Bos and I, we're chatting, we're clear that held up their end, their obligations for maintenance of the road. So we have plenty of options. Or like Bos said, a lot of times, it's easier to get someone to do something, you know, than rather than, you know, friend of law. Which can be part of that process. But, yeah, so we're engaging with them, but we have good people footing.
This has been going on for a year.
Basically, this is Turn 2, and I am in conversation with the businesses, giving them updates. The businesses are comfortable that we are in their corner advocating, we're to a resolution. Some are, you know, disenfranchising businesses. But we owe them something based on their.
Oh, yeah.
You got your general manager report, just, I have one that made the report because it came in afterwards. Jamal is going to be taking Cindy's spot as community planner. He's been on board now a week, and we look forward to his contribution to the team. So Jamal, welcome.
Welcome.
He brings a wealth of knowledge from planning, brand writing and everything. And residents to Highlands County, Jamal, give me a few minutes about yourself, Jamal. Introduce yourself.
Greetings, everyone. I'm Jamal Baskin. And I am, like Bos said, lead to Highlands County, originally from Miami, Florida. Bounced around the, you know, state of Florida from Orlando to Tampa, Tallahassee. But now here because my wife brought me here. She's a state attorney in Highlands County, so we've been here, living in Lake Placid, and now we have our home in Seabrook. So joining us so far, I know how some really huge issues to feel, but I'm grateful to be a part of this team.
Welcome.
And there's some additional stuff that HR that we're working with, training as well as some AP training with the machines yesterday. And we are managing, monitoring the overtime question. So what it stands, it's basically getting some departments out of that mindset that needs your reaction of utilization of overtime. It's not in that budget, but we're putting some emphasis on it to the department. Resurcement, we got our agreements with the actual install of the, six miles of roadways. There's a, it's all over the district. Once the contractor gets back to be on the timeline, this may start in the March timeframe. We will call the Shack, get it out to all the residents. They're going to be in charge of flaggers, D2 routes and everything. And this will be a great catch-up to our district. The last major resurcement project was over five years ago. So we're going to get called back and discussions will start seeing moving forward. We have to add a minimum of about three miles a year to stay constant, stay current. That will continue. We are making impacts on resourcing. And I hope you, as individuals, as well as residents are seeing, that it's just a big area to cover. But we are making, we have monthly magistrate meetings where we're holding residents that are woefully out of conformant. We are holding those and assessing fees to those. So if that's happening, we're getting about 90% compliance identified once we get the code folks on site. So we are making progress. We are now getting down to the, not only what I call habitual offenders, but the, the problem areas that have kind of been, I won't say neglected, but just overlooked as the years progressed. They got basically accepted and mediocrity said, and that's just more guys. So we're changing that understanding. I'm telling the code team to be a little bit more on the forward-leaning side and take not consistent input, but our ability to self-report. And I say that you are supposed to not be going out there looking for co-bodice. That's against the law and per se. But self-report if we see stuff. I say self-report. If my group, if my security teams are going around, they know our rules, they see something, they, as a responsible citizen, end up reporting and then let the code folks start doing their thing. But I should not have, nor do I have a code guy going out and looking for the problem. So it has to be reported. We're getting better at that and passing that information on to the code folks. Doing great because they go back to patients, saving hours, days of work. That's a very beneficial.
We cannot be proactive on code enforcement.
You're, yeah, I don't want to speak the legal terminology on it, but we're not just going out there and not being on board and saying, this, this, this is wrong. It's supposed to be all the way.
Yeah, you're not, you're not really permitted to start going to properties. Maybe it's a habitual offender to just check if anything's going on. But like Bos said, if we're driving out to another property to see if compliance has been, you know, met. And on the way, we happen to see something, then that's something we can obviously pursue. And additionally, on the code piece, I prepared a new form order for the district to start utilizing. Previously, the magistrate was utilizing, he was producing it and getting it to us. Previously, the magistrate, and my understanding is the request for code is going to start to change a little bit. The magistrate was not issuing daily fines for violations. And under chapter 162 code enforcement, which we're authorized to do, is the big, that's the teeth of code enforcement, right? If someone's out of compliance, they go to the magistrate. They're found to be in violation, they don't correct the violation within the time prescribed by the magistrate. In every city and county across the state, there's daily fines. And for first-time offenses, it's up to $50 a day. And that order that we, I'm working with Melissa, while that order, the next day they're found a violation, it gets reported, and it's a lean on the property of that. So I mean, we, that is, that is the real teeth, that's the leverage that code has over folks to get these, you know, properties that have been in compliance for many months into compliance in our places where there's no set protection. You know, we have the ability to foreclose. You know, we have the ability to foreclose after three months. And again, that's really, if someone goes and, you know, unapproved parcel doesn't want to deal with it, that's an easy way for the district to, um, you know, claw back some property and bring these visual offenders into compliance. So, uh, that's another step I hope you all start to see, uh, code tape.
So teeth are in place and we're getting, uh, the process refined for code. You guys hit on it and it's something that would come from my office. The golf greens timeline is a district infrastructure project. And I don't want anyone in this room or citizens to think it's just the golf guys doing their thing, fixing the greens. The district is taking this project on. I owe you the construction timeline, the budget, that type of stuff, that's from my scheme. We'll lay that out, just like we did example of the Sunlight Boulevard, you'll get monthly updates of where we stand on that budget wise, as well as construction. And then we do a mass ass one, this time it's dirty food, this time it's money spent, all that type of stuff. So, uh, we understand the, the importance that that project is, that's in my bucket, a major infrastructure project, it's half a million dollars, all our money, it will be spent effectively and we will get on time on target. So that'll be moving out on that. Our budget's on track, you see the data in there? We, uh, I hear you, Mr. Brooks, and it frustrates me too, we are still struggling with our, for our process. That side, we will give them an exact copy of what we want the product to look like. And I'm spending, cordial spend weeks back and forth on emails, phone calls, them misinterpreting, understanding, saying they can't do it, saying they won't do it. It's a struggle, it's a struggle to the point that, yes, we are going to be actively, we have, uh, looking for, trying to get this thing back in house, we're going to have to do that. They are just, they're, they're just not satisfying. They just don't notice, we will officially place them on notice if we don't see a change. They, they give us a little bit, it fixes something, but then it doesn't get the fix in the monthly report. So, I'm, I'm concerned about, the data is good, the data is where we stand as a district. The products we've added for golf, as well as that one product you have for our reserves, our accounts, very comfortable with, that is fed from them from our, I know the data's coming in properly. It's just a presentation because this is an outsourced entity, they really just don't have the ability to understand what we want the product to look like. Even if I gave them the picture, this is what I want to, they still struggle with that, so. Uh, we'll, our budget in total is on track, assessments, we're down about nine hundred thousand dollars of unpaid assessments, this is the annual assessment. So that's seventy-seven percent paid today. Uh, these are mostly the folks that just wait till it's due, so these are people not taking advantage of the discounts, that's a problem. Uh, so we should be wrapping those up this month and definitely by the end of, when we get all the payments in. Uh, we're good on our regular memberships for, uh, club, pool, gym, they're pretty much on track to what we expect for this year. Our expenses are thirty-three percent execution range, four months into the year, that's, that's pretty good, so we live there. And, uh, I know it's a struggle to understand and to see the, these snapshots via golf, via food, via, uh, even the district. I think because we are operating on the annual budget, we really need to put more energy into looking at how we're doing exactly that. And that, but that's what I focus on first, and then I reel back and deep dive into the monthly issue. And, uh, we discussed a lot here tonight or today with golf, there's a lot of process and muscle memory that needs to be changed in that entity. And he knows, I talk to him every damn day about. That's where my energy is going right now to figure out employee costs, uh, cost of goods, quality of goods. We're, that's what we're focusing on and you're seeing some progress there. For us to go down the road of, and then no, no offense to the comments, let's shut down on Monday, let's all, more discounts. To throw something new at them, they're just going to use the same processes. We're going to fail miserably. That's my fault process, I'm sorry, that's, that's why I agree. So I'm trying to get the processes in place and that takes a little time for them to build the proper muscle memory. Then we need to go sexy all day long with the types of things. And we will, but I need to get the processes right. I'm spending a lot of energy with him and his team to try to get that. And that's our small movements, I will use the example here, we expected to lose, which kills me that budget, that says we're going to lose money here. We expected to lose about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year in the restaurant operation. If you look at how we're progressing monthly and how we're nugging down that amount, that, uh, per month, we are, we are way ahead of that. That I can't say we're going to make a profit, we're going to get pretty close if you see how that's panning out for the year. That's what I'm focused on, all right, so I'm putting energy into that, uh, and that goes for the golf operation, the district operation. Uh, but overall, I'm very comfortable with the budget stance, the money we're generating, the collection process and the expenditure process. All departments across the district are operating very fiscally conservative, but we're not losing the ability to provide services to our residents. I'm not getting calls of why ain't you fixing this bottle? Why ain't you fixing this street sign? We get those calls, they get fixed, we're doing that. So, uh, is that I'm comfortable with how we're moving out? It will always get better. Streetlights, received first feedback from Duke, sixty-seven lights across the district. So now we are confirming what the Duke engineers said compared to what I submitted. And we're trying to go back to back of why. Here's the challenge I see that's going to come out of that, once we get the final product agreement between us and Duke. My intent, where Duke has struggled in the past, as they started going and installing lights, proof. And when they sent a team out to whatever street, they got to that resident, they were told by the resident or by the neighbors, no, no, move that light down here, I don't want it on my name. So the Duke folks, not to be confrontational, so said, okay, we'll either stop, don't install it, or we'll go back and kind of stymie the process. So that's why we have sporadic streetlight. We plan, once the plan is approved, we'll bring it to you, you guys will tell me this plan is acceptable. We will engage our residents, all the streetlights are in the right way, we control it, we will engage your residents and inform them that there will be a light installed on this entity for the safety and security of your neighborhood, this is where it's going. There is no influencing the Duke folks, that's just a directive, we're doing it for the safety and security of the district. So that'll be how we're going to get ahead of that post. That's why you see a streetlight here and then ten blocks down the road, you see the next one. It should be, the standard for Duke is every fourth house, there is a light, that's the way you get the flash, the light flash, the properly light area and then add a safety, safety.
Well, I said, the lights you're talking about, they're going to be sporadic throughout the district.
Well, sporadic, but we did it by neighborhoods.
About where the new construction is going. There's nothing.
Yes, uh, tied to that is, we, the only new destruction area I'd say is between Cortez, Sunlight and the golf course, that, that new area where all southerners need to go. We, we didn't identify that area for streetlights. So that's part.
Sanitation.
Yes, that area, yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's a part of the number that you.
That's part of that number, the next numbers, it'll be next budget here, the next set of numbers is start powering up the north side along Columbus, that area, there, there's little neighborhoods there. But also we're going to start powering up our, our back forty, our western Cortez and start lighting up that area there. Because we're finding there, there's no lights, not a lot of houses, a lot of the buried stuff. So we get lights out there, we'll have a better idea of the restaurants.
We're going to light up towards, uh, on the bike trail or the walking path all the way out.
Well, yes, Sunlight been all the way out, we've already incorporated that, yes. So, uh, I'm hoping that, that result, resolution of peanuts and new will be done over the next couple of weeks. And then in March, you'll see that we're lighting down our streetlight plan. That's the big thing there, unless you have to bump off the GM for order. I'll move to the specialty items bracket. We got the initial feedback on digital signage, uh, this, so this is a generic graphic representation of what we're looking at. It's not going to be a major sign, it's going to be a self-standing sign, so we haven't really picked the option, that bottom left corner. We're probably going to go, that, out of the bottom left, six examples, the top right example. Where it's, uh, standalone posts, open access to the bottom, easier maintenance, and then we hang the digital signage right there and where it says maintenance, that's the digital signage. The top part is a generic, uh, this is on the leg and so on. And so we're, we're getting the numbers back. Now, for a single sided sign, two foot by six foot, it's in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range. That's them giving us the sign when we do the install. And that was the light, we didn't want them, them to do the install on that part. Because some of these installs are simply, what we're buying here is a, uh, is the, a, a box that has the workings installed, we just hang it, one, threw it in and it's done. And then there's some, uh, IT that connects it and stuff. So how do we hang it, totally up to us, I don't want to aggravate the cost there. So basically, if you want double sided, at some locations, we do want double sided. Probably in the twenty, twenty-two thousand dollar range. So really, I'm looking at a single sided, we get, we get that locked in by, uh, the, the plan right now was six of those and then three double sided. And then those are spread out, I owe you where, spread out. But it'll be across the district, it's not the main street, right now it's across the district. And we'll lay these out and then it will cover the best points for our citizens, so there's also the same message, all of them will say the same message. It'll be on a loop, we'll control it from our district office, we'll put out oil notices, restaurant specials, all of that stuff, so everyone gets the same glass. And based on the location, obviously some are more critical, have double sided rather than how it's single sided. So I think numerically, it's going to be, if we do all at one time, which is about a three month lead time for construction and installation. If we do it all, it's going to be in the hundred thousand dollar range for everyone. So again, I will bring back the final numbers per location, the cost, definitely value, definitely gets the message out, it addresses a gap in our messaging to our citizens, not only for emergencies, but for, and they stuff. And, uh, if we place it, we'll place it in the right areas, it'll hit the about eighty percent of our population, they will have to pass one of these signs, how many signs? It'll be si- uh, six and three. Six, six, three double sided.
And if you're going, do we look at this here?
I'm, I'm looking at, this is something that we need to execute under our, our budget building funds because it's infrastructure and it's executed out of resurcings. Yeah, I think there's a criticality here tied to our emergencies and other stuff to get these in place so we can use them for emergencies. We'll all be on backup, generate a backup, the way we're positioned around here, tied to listings and so on, so, uh, it'll be something that we'll be able to use for emergencies as well as data.
You're going to have a map where you're.
Yes, yeah, and where, which one we double sided, I mean, it's the usual, you know, coming in the north, all the main entrances as well.
Right.
But there's some internal, like, uh, the intersection going to the community center on Sunlight Boulevard, when you hit the stop sign and you either go straight or take a left, go into a community center. That's a key area for, uh, probably a double sided sign, those people who will. Further down.
But wouldn't you have one right there?
At the circle of the district office.
Right.
How we orient, that'll be the same side.
So just, you're talking just a block with you later, or do you?
Well, and again, once we lay out the amount of traffic.
Okay.
That's going by these locations, we'll know how many people sit by there, the one. Maybe negated because we have one further up by wooden irons and we have one down here in Grove. And that's where the people are going, they'll see those signs. My concern is I won't have a sign right outside to inform them about clubhouse stuff, restaurant stuff. But we'll lay it all out, I just wanted to give you an update that we've seen a couple of quotes, two, this is a national firm, they got the best. And, uh, and we'll refine that and, uh, until I knew the rough ballpark, I'm, I'm treating this as, we're going to put this out for bid, but we already had the three bids coming in. Depending on the number, and we'll have, for RFP and all, we'll see what you want, not if it's the criteria, I don't know if you're going to be able to beat this, this bid, but, uh, I hope you have options.
Two by six.
Two by six. So if, if, the comparable is, if you go out our front entrance here, that new shopping little center across from Wawa, that's a two by six. It's, it's right out of the front gate. Yes, that's two by six. Uh, two by six gives us, gives us basically.
Give them that way the Palmer's used to do, yeah?
Yeah. Side of the tree, that's two by six. That's two by six, it gives us about ten lines of text. If you go regular text, you could, you obviously have to go pretty size of the farm. Uh, I think that for what we want to do, the quality in the video, the quality of sign, if we're going to do videos, you know, put a picture, fish fry picture and then the time, we do something like that. We don't need it, need the final numbers, but we are making progress on getting that.
We're buying these outright?
We would owe, we would own these with our installation and there is no recurring fee. It's a, it's a lifelong Verizon wire, that's wired wifi to our district office. So that, that gives us the ability on a smartphone or a fat laptop, you can change the message anytime. We don't get it at the first time, we're done. Twenty-five, I got nothing to report on this, they were all either approved in the budget or we approved by a special board vote. So all are over twenty-five thousand dollars in compliance with, uh, local and state. No issues here. Fiftieth anniversary continues to go forth, we're, uh, we have music in the park, we laid that out for the rest of the year, there's your dates and your timeline. So when we say music in the park, this is right out back here by the altar, that's where the band will be set up, giving them cover. And then citizens will bring their own chairs and sit around with some music. So that's the intent for that. Uh, during that time, working with clubhouse, we'll get either the beverage cart or something to get present, we'll get a food truck, so there'll be some food and drink options there. We'll, uh, we'll start this, uh, in March. The Sunlight, uh, fiftieth anniversary golf tournament, so this is the first of, well, it's not signed in March, this is the April twentieth, this is the night, the day after the gala, which is Friday night. This is conceptually how, uh, this will be run, uh, golf tournament, uh, seventeenth. Follow this, this will go out through the, the golf channels, the golf committee, that word out for signups and so on. And right now, the biggest event we're in is the dinner dance, the gala, nineteen eighty-five to nine, we have two hundred and fifty seats right now. And I think as of Friday of last week, fifty have been sold already.
Okay, you say invitees, are you do, are you doing the inviting or?
Yeah, we've identified, uh, well, no, that's, probably the wrong language.
Okay.
We have two hundred and fifty seats, we are inviting some VIP guests on behalf of the district, I'm talking like the governor, that's like. We haven't received any, yeah, so we sent that out, we haven't received any.
So, so if we didn't get one, we're not out.
It's a given, you all are not, it's a given, you all be, but I'm talking the, uh, you know, the county chairman, that is. So, uh, we have a few of those and then, uh, the rogue individuals that had the cost of the district, uh, the governor says he's coming here, we're going to pay for the governors, that type of stuff. If we're laughing, if we're laughing.
So, so we should be signing up.
Well, uh, I would defer that to Ariel, she'll work on that and we'll make sure that the people we are inviting get something, so they don't do it online. So you, I don't get it, do you get something from our? And, uh, we say.
This is a black tie.
It's a black tie and it's a, we don't, it's a fiftieth anniversary, we're going all.
Where do we get touches of severance?
You have to find a big one.
Is there a place to see?
A black suit or.
There you go.
A black suit or.
I don't even have. I got one. So, I suppose like whales, yeah. When you send us in a, thank you.
Shopping recommendations.
Lord have mercy.
So the, the concept here is a, a two hour cocktail party or cocktail event. There's a band and then it'll go into the evening, uh, have them locked in if we're going to do a guest speaker, the highest ranking person that comes back, right? And we'll have that, and then decorations, the food, everything, we're working on that, so that's that Friday, then you have the, the tournament on Saturday. And then the only thing previously on our actual April fifteenth day is a two hour cocktail party in the clubhouse, those are all invitees. You'll get, there'll be one hundred people specifically invited, some residents that's been many years, have contributed for the district, you all obviously. And then there'll be very few on the higher end of all the county or above list, this is more, more so us. And then there'll be very few on the higher end of all the county or above list. This is more, more so us. So, uh, we'll have that invite. No food there other than, you know, some snacks. It'll be just a cocktail, a two hour. Uh, we're working some issue with fireworks, uh, on the nineteenth. Uh, other events. And then the only thing that was listed here, but there's a community festival while. Golf tournament is going on. There's a community festival event going on that same. Right out back here, uh, for families and kids and others, kind of like we did at Christmas for the Christmas event. So, uh, we're working on these events as we do throughout the year. These are pretty much in the short range. We're only about two months out. Two months. So more to follow on this. There's an Eventbrite location out to buy tickets online and, uh, we'll take it from there.
Do something. For the people who. And are here in April. Later in the year. And tie it as a celebration.
Yeah.
I just made it.
So we were planning to do something for Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas, not right? I mean, whatever, separate. Yeah. And that'll, that'll get our silverback.
Including, including. Nice, the golf tournament, because somebody in them will like golf. But they won't be here in April. So have something for them later in the year. We did away with the welcome back, which was a.
Got it. Yeah.
Possible.
Okay. I mean, just to look at it or not, I appreciate it. No, I agree. Well, uh, we have time to react to that. So we'll add that to our list of, uh, fiftieth anniversary. Uh, okay. Recycle Center. This is the north entrance. This is our last county discussion. We have a map. So this is, uh, entrance to Sunlake. Across the street is the, uh, restaurant, the golf party. Frontage Road. This is an existing lot that we own. There's already access there.
This isn't across from.
So that's the entrance. That's our northern sign right there in the picture. Uh, possibly on.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the course is to the north west of this.
But isn't, where's Turner's Furniture?
Uh, that's further, uh, to the south of this picture. Yeah. The next thing here is a, is a medical office, that building. There's a small medical office. I guess there used to be some. Yeah.
I thought this was going down by the. Unit four.
Yeah. There's a site there, but we don't control the frontage road side. We. Backside. So the county preferred to put this more so on frontage. It's our discussion. If we put it closer to our unit four, it's off account. If it's off of frontage road, their concern is not a lot of people will know how to get to there. The directions we're here, it's right in your face.
But unit four is off of frontage road.
Unit four is, but there's a parcel in front of unit four that we don't own. It's owned by the, the hospital. So the entrance to unit four, and I said A road, I apologize for the name. The entrance to unit four, uh, which is our northern wastewater plant. Both sides of that road is owned by the hospital. We don't own until behind them. So you would have to place this further in. Four property. We have issue with that. They have issue with that.
We own a piece of property. At the hospital that we really don't, they don't, they own everything around it. We have access. It's limited access for us to get into. Could we not maybe trade that property to them that property, which would be all of, it's in. It's right to the north east of the hospital.
It's all upon.
Mm-hmm.
It's up, it's. That road that you're putting in, or the road that's there now that we're gonna put the.
Speed box.
It's to the south of that and over towards the east side of the hospital.
Okay.
We have a lot there that we don't. We will never do anything with if we could trade so that we could put. It there.
You prefer it here. That's what I get.
I don't, I don't like it here. Uh-uh.
I personally, I don't like it.
Okay.
Because at unit four, it could be somewhat hidden.
Yeah.
Because this, it's gonna be as you drive down, you're gonna look.
Yeah, I.
You can, you, from twenty-seven, you can see that.
I got you. Uh, okay. The top picture is what it actually looks like. And the only thing we're going to do different is ask for, uh, fence. Like inside our, our pickleball area. We're wanting that whole screen so you can't see inside. So here goes where they put it. We're asking for that.
We really saw that it was okay.
We voted this down twice, not once, but twice.
We finally came back. I thought we were talking about unit four.
I don't remember.
We didn't. We voted it down twice. Once, but twice. That's where it was. That's where it was.
So if there's no appetite for it, please tell me because I left the last meeting we had two months, two weeks ago was we're interested. Want to pick a location. Now I'm getting you guys all in at all.
I'm not sure. I, I mean, is there a way to find out if the people want it?
Well, no, no. The people want it. Our residents are, are wanting it because they don't, they don't like going to see. An Avon Park for recyclables.
If residents wants.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not here.
No, no, I got you now. So in the plan for the next contract renewal recyclables with the county, if you all fall under, there is no need to put in recycling cans at the individual level again. So that's. So because of that, they're willing to fund one of these closer to Sunlake. Because we do have about five thousand customers that support the county recycling. They're wanting to give us one of these free no charge. So your concern is the location right now. So we're. The, uh, maintenance bay. That was option one.
Yeah, that was at the back.
Say it all. We're not doing it in the apartment model. The core is right by pickleball. This was option three. You don't like this. You're wanting more south, maybe unit four, maybe, uh, off of the hospital.
The property so that we could put the sun, the property that the hospital owns at unit four.
You bet.
Have them give us that and we will give them the lot that's over there.
And I can't imagine that. That is a, a building right there that is busy this. There all the time. And that down there is. And then there's doctors and surgical centers and everything else right there on that road. I can't imagine that they would want that. I do too.
All right. Uh, we will, uh, look at other options further on. I'm taking, my preference is keep it towards.
It's on frontage. I'll go with unit four.
Yeah. Yes. And just keep it towards frontage. If there's nowhere else inside the district, then. So we keep it on frontage, maybe a further south. Worth the screen there. That's what I get now.
Further south.
Desert right after, out by the wastewater plant.
Well, that, that, they offered that. He says we won't be ready for that for a while. They're gonna put this in this year's. Okay, we're following. So, uh, we'll, we'll put this back to county. Go get some plans. You have your golf minutes. Nothing controversial, controversial there. Uh, they're still having their meetings and, uh, we get the feedback from them. And. Yes, sir.
New Arvin forty-five oh five Calatrava. Is this recycling center for the residents only or is this going to be open to public or?
It is open to public. County site. Anyone in the county can use it. Thorough, uh, not. The other three locations, there's basically like a five mile circle around. Those people use it. So their estimates based on where they put it for us, it'll be mostly Sunlake. But there will be opportunities for others to use it.
Other question I would have on that whole thing of trying to close that median, right? That same intersection? Where the sign, where.
True. That is true. Yep.
Rather than closing, it's, it's probably gonna be. Right turn only.
Yeah, right turn only.
You won't be able to cross over.
Right. So you're gonna have traffic trying to get to this.
True.
Maybe that's good. But it sounds like.
Any other questions on the DMs report that y'all have? I know there's a lot in there.
The county meeting yesterday or last week.
Uh, yeah. Um, sorry. Yeah, I apologize. Uh, so I was at the county meeting and the county board. Hour issue with, uh, the landowner, I should say absentee voting as well as code enforcement came up. What did, come up for a vote, came up for their lawyer. To put it in the right language for them to vote on it. That was interesting because that's not what was on, my interpretation. That was a discussion. That said, the, all, all five of the commissioners are very supportive. Actually, as part of the meeting, the official record, the county attorney recommended to county commissioners that in her initial assessment of this project, also Sunlake in general, that the formation of Sunlake years ago was more treated like an HOA. Than a municipal government per se. So a lot of the language in our code that she says we need to change and she appreciates the Sunlight team. Feeding her changes that she can get through the system. So I, using that, I don't see a lot of pushback from any of the commissioners. On, on whatever we send up there saying maybe we want this to look like this and so on and so forth. Because we are, we've left the world of unincorporated county. We haven't made it to city yet, but we've left that world and we're more of a municipal government that runs this place. And we're able to take. So, uh, I, I, Garrett will work with, uh, county attorney on. That they are now wanting. And, uh, Kerweck and, uh, Roberts basically gave them a thirty day at the next meeting they want.
So they're, they're gonna go on the landowner situation?
They're gonna change. That.
Yeah. And the, uh.
And we wanted more code enforcement changes.
So. Your respects.
We're gonna talk about this at the very end here. Uh, yeah. And that was. That's why you do the, the county is going to be more open to changes every one when it comes to not only, um, planning, zoning, building. Now that they. And that we need more rigor. Uh, so we're going to finance with three motions that we're gonna ask, Corey, you guys?
Good morning supervisors. Okay, so, uh, there are three motions to be made. Two were straightforward. Let's address the first one. Requested motion, board approval for the general manager, Fray Bossett, director of finance, Coral Benka, access to the Heartland Golf Bank account. This is just the last, uh, golf, uh, bank accounts that are with Heartland. I've done signature cards and, um, gained access to the other three. This one remains. Address.
So move.
Discussion. Call vote.
Supervisor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Norton.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks. Supervisor Eric.
Yes.
President Phillips.
Yes.
Okay, the second motion I'd like to address is the one for the Europe impact account. This motion is to, um, board approval for the general manager and the director of finance to have the ability to transfer funds from the utility Europe, uh, impact. So, um, just some background on it. You could see that we use that as a holding for some of the finances that are, um, accumulated from utilities and the limitation right now is just wired. For some reason, it was overlooked. Commissions were granted before. Were, um, the ability to transfer out into other accounts is there. Uh, so it's just to have the minutes for approval to, uh, move the money via wire into the high yield. Utility accounts.
So it's going to be the account eight one one one, is that account?
It's a.
It comes out of. Um, no, this is not coming from the, um, eight one one. It is coming from the twenty fifty one. The utility Europe impact. The, the one you. This is the utility fund itself.
It's coming from twenty fifty one, twenty.
That is not my motion. That is not my motion.
I'm sorry. Triple three.
I moved, I just, I just moved for bank access and then you can go back to talk about the other one.
Well, you're on the bottom. Yeah, apology.
Apology accepted.
I was just going in.
So basically, the, uh, ability to transfer the money is there. I just. A cleaner, um. By doing a wire transfer, it makes a clean vote rather than transferring it into another TD account and then transferring it out of that TD account. So, um, I think it was an oversight originally when the accounts were set. And I just would like to have something in the minutes which would make our bankers happy.
So move.
Discussion. Call the vote.
Supervisor Norton.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks. Supervisor Eric.
Yes.
Supervisor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
President Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you supervisors. Now. The other question is a discussion and a motion to authorize the movement of the million five from the utility fund to our utility reserves. Now, this would be the fund that was sitting, the money was sitting in the utility fund. Already approved and moved. Again, this is just something for the record for, um, the minutes. Because this month, this action was approved in November. I just need a vote on. For the auditor.
It's for the audit.
So is it eighty-one eleven accountant?
The utility fund, yes.
So you want to take the million five out of that? It's already out.
It's out.
If this is just cleanup.
And, and to remind you, these are placed, this money moving around is being placed in the high. Interest accounts.
Right.
Some of them are districts. Worriedly. And some of them we have access.
That you're showing at eighty.
Yeah, eight, eight, eight one eleven. Yes, sir. Yes. Yes, sir.
Like I say, we executed moves based on y'all vote back in November on budget amendment. We executed the moves. This was once the auditors and the financial folks said, hey, can we get a clean vote? That's why we're breaking that. It's already done. We're within our. We just need some clean language for the audits.
Okay. And then those monies. Is that part of eighty-nine forty-seven?
It's part of eighty-nine forty.
Yes, sir.
Second.
In the. Call the vote.
Supervisor Brooks. Supervisor Eric.
Yes.
Supervisor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Norton.
Yes.
President Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you're planning, you've got a few slides left. I'll, I'll, I'll set. Now let's call and send each other. So we're, we're gonna continue that road as a team. Not only a comp plan, I require, but we want one. This will help lay out. For future of the district. And usually the composition of what a comp plan is if you look online for any type of city or town. So, uh, all this data, we're just going to incorporate it if you have that in public session. Board input is going to be a real timeline. So, uh, how come? This last word, we're gonna do that. That's a task by Dave. And he's gonna. Jazz that pass on tomorrow. He has that task. Earlier, the current comp plan of our county shows this for our district. This is the future land use map of the district and the way the county looks at us. This is what feeds their state, I call it, permitting, rezoning and soul. As you quickly can see. At one time in the past, there was, uh, some idea that a lot of land in Sunlake was utilized to build a bucket of mixed use. To be able to, for the county to say, we have a lot of mixed use opportunities in our. You see, our major areas of concern is where we are having a growth of single-family houses. Those three, you see there in the middle, as well as unit 12, as well as the 40 there between Granada and Sunland. The county looks at those, everything from single-family home to duplex, to triplex, to apartment building, to a complex. They can go there right now the way the county wants, and we have no say in that. So, our initial focus will be to request a comp plan change, to change all those purple areas to red or orange areas. They all need to be medium-density, single-family homes. They can be potential manufactured and potential for new places, but we have a vote of it. So, we want to change that diet. We also want to show that that north area is now basically conservation. That needs to be taken off the table.
Right.
Because our wastewater plant needs to be considered public. That needs to take... Changes that we need to do comp plan-wise, and it's a good thing that the person that owns this is sitting right down there. She'll help us with it at the county level, because that's the job she's taking. So, she knows what we need, she'll work on it from that end, an advocate for us, I hope. They're burning bridges, and we will provide whatever requirements to do that. The concern that I think a lot of citizens forget or don't understand until they see something like this, we have a lot of commentary along Edgewater, along Granada, there's duplexes, triplexes, apartment buildings, and they're popping up all over the place. This is why. If you look around typically, you see a brownish area, and that was determined by the county. Look at the whole neighborhood between Catalina and Ponce. That whole neighborhood is labeled as high density. So, you can, even though we got single-family homes living in there, the county could allow, if someone petitions and says, hey, I want to build something, they can allow them to build right in the middle of that neighborhood. So, but that said, we can't really change what's built. We can definitely change what's moving forward as future lands. So, using this tool, we're going to provide some feedback to the county and say, we need this change because this is what they use as a foundation document moving forward. Garages, the square foot minimum, facades, specifics, you know. We don't want to get too much in people's business, but there is a formal aesthetic that we as a district are wanting to set because that's the content.
Absolutely.
It's the value of our business.
Absolutely.
So, those are initiatives that we will move forward. This is the start point to work on the future land use map. This then spins down other land use requests. So, very similar to what our late glasses friend, in some cases, Sebring, there is an overlay that anything that happens within that city, the county starts the process by sending it to the city for their comment. We want them to create what I've laid here slap, the Sunland Lake area plan. So, go ahead, sir.
Here, I see a thousand square footage minimum, where we, over here, we had 1,200.
Yes, sir. We started with 12. County is more leaning to say, we're going to hand this up. A thousand is what we've been approving. That'll be a discussion we'll have. If you guys are really set on 12, that start going in.
I'd like 12.
Yeah. And we want to establish an overlay that anything the county is entertaining to approve, we have a vote on that. If that's a separate committee, if that's you guys, if that's the GM, we determine, we'll lay that out to them. And then there's some specifics in there, changing the mixed-use, requesting that garage mandatory for that. So, that helps us with the code enforcement.
It does.
And so on, and some facade requirements. So, we'll work towards that. The start point really is the previous line. That's my two cents on it.
And what do you think?
I'd agree on 1,200.
I'd like to agree on 1,200.
I think 1,200, I think that's important.
And garages.
From us, what do you tell me, what did you think?
I think the average home right now, the southern homes are being built in the 1,200 range.
Yeah.
So, I think establishing a 1,200, that's not crazy, but it's going to limit builders to, that there's certain areas that you want to get more affordable or multifamily housing, that's hard to build a 1,200 half-duplex because that's a $4,800, $2,400 square foot plot. That would limit, even though we allow duplex, that would limit both to start buying a bunch of parcels and merging together. Now, you have this messy complex. It's a start point discussion. We're going to...
One of the reasons I think I like it.
Yeah. We're going to be limited, so we are hard, hard. We want to hold firm on 1,200. We go in with 1,200 and...
I want Sunland Lake to be the place.
And I agree with that because my biggest issue from what is happening out in my area in Big Grove is duplexes that they're putting up. Some of them, but those duplexes that don't have a garage.
Right.
If they're, the junk is always outside. I mean, they don't have a place to put their stuff. And I don't know what, they're very small, and I think, you know, in those particular cases, there's several of them that are being built out there that just deteriorate the looks of the area. Brings it down.
That's why I said...
1,200 would make it sort of more single-family dwellings, person duplexes. I agree with that, but...
Yeah. The workaround in the zoning world is how we, we would present this is that we want a 1,200 or 1,000 square foot living space house. We will not, we will not deter you with using any garage. We will not use the garage square footage to force you to build something. Okay? So, they get truly 1,000 square feet of house, and then the 400 square feet that's a garage is, we require a garage to have a good garage, but doesn't eat into that 1,000. And that's where builders are going to push back on this, is that if you're making, build a 1,200 square foot with a garage, I'm basically going to give you an 800 square foot house and I'm going to build 400 square foot garage. I don't know if that...
Well, maybe it was, it should be square, 1,200 square foot.
Living space.
No, I'm with you.
Living space.
So, if it's 1,200 square foot living space, you've got to be clear, and then we add on to that. And oh, by the way, everyone will have at least a six-foot garage per parcel as a mandate.
I like that.
I do too.
That's going to be our goal and point with our county, you know, we take... 1,000 doesn't bother me, the garage bothers me. We have that.
Sure.
Same, sir.
The light coverage.
Okay.
We'll go 1,000 plus...
At a minimum of 1,000 plus.
A minimum.
But I think we're leaning more towards 1,200.
1,200. Not 1,200.
Gotcha.
And do you have a timeline on this?
We totally have the county with their zoning. There's a lot of public meetings, there's a lot of county staff. This is probably at least a 12-month process.
Well, can we start?
No, no, you're, you're changing the county comp plan that they don't want to change a lot.
Right. Exactly. We need to... I know. That was two years.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to have to develop the, all the changes to the land development code. That's going to probably go back and forth after many months. It's going to need to go to the county planning board to review, recommend, the county commissioners, and that's going to need to be read by the county commissioner once. And there may be additional issues, you know, whatever you look at, changing zoning or adding restrictions on the property, if it, there's any loss of value of property, right, the county's not going to want to do that, it's their initiative. But repairs plan, so there's, there's a bit that needs to go for this, and it's going to at least take eight months.
Before we even start?
Until we're at the finish line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there will be, this is, I believe, just directions, there will be a final product that will come back to you all. If we don't start, we'll get there.
Exactly. Exactly.
Want to add anything or chat with them?
I was just going to say, just to clarify from the county's perspective, there's actually two things you're going to be requesting to change. The first is the comprehensive plan, so that's where you would create the Sunland Lake area plan. That lays out the goals and objectives that you're looking to achieve. Fundamentally, that's the same as the comprehensive plan for the district. We would be looking at the same kind of elements, future land use, infrastructure, all those types of things. So, from your perspective, you can kind of handle that simultaneously. It can be your comprehensive plan, but that can also be what goes to the county as you're capable to change their comprehensive plan. So, then the second part would be changes to the land development regulations, and that's where you would get into the changes, building sizes, garages.
Okay.
So, that process.
Okay.
So, from the county, we're really looking to you, have public input meetings, get it on your end first before it then comes to the county and goes through the planning and process, then the board of county commissioners.
Okay.
Do you want to say something, sir?
Anything, Jamal? Anything you'd like? I'll bring it up. So, the board of followers, I got is we'll put together a team, get something. And again, some points, this is, this is pretty from the county plan. How the county plan, they look at it, some people are adhering to it, some people just this on their show. So, the county, conceptually, this will come out in our plan, has a plan to put any high school in Sunland. And that's where it is. If you look right there, it's right up... So, we'll have those discussed with our county friends at the spot. But obviously, that's a plan that we need to inform them to change, that's not hyperallergenic. But there is a need, the school district wants one, we are a feeder a lot for the high school, so we need to place one. We need to sit down with them and see what's a better area in Sunland that we could offer to them. So, that's a discussion. You see here all the county roads. So, in the county plan, the corner there, the county says they maintain all the Sunland Lake roads, that's that little center area, county of Sunland. That's, we'll make them, we'll make sure they change that. The county also, future road, the county has a plan of a future road, that purple line that cuts right from 634, that's Schumacher. So, the county already has plans for a future road all the way into county, or into Hare County on Schumacher. So, we're just making them, informing them, please just...
Hurry up.
We support you 100%, and it's in your plan. We're not asking you to add anything. A point that we will have incorporated in our plan, a lot of our roads are nature and minor collective roads. That's proven, DOT confirms that. So, that gives us the ambition to come to the county that we're not just a side street, we're a major feeder into your road network, just because you need a plan accordingly when it comes to the interconnection points. So, these are just new products out of the county plan that we will provide to them, updates, and information, and that will come, just like Cindy said, that will come from our comp plan submission. Just, I thought we're quoting for the examples of what's in the comp plan. Some people, you know, some people don't.
Wow.
They just live by it.
Yep.
And that is all we have as a staff unless you have any questions.
Yes, sir.
I'm sitting here so long, you see.
You can fill my slide. I live at 45, 10, Calatrava. And my question goes back a lot to bigger hurricane here that dumped water, and the board was very responsive and dug trenches, and you did a lot to prevent this from happening. Last year, we had a hurricane, which, but now we're getting into hurricane season again. Question is, do we have a process and plan for cause to inspect these ditches to make sure they haven't been filled and that they're still, you know, what they intended to be?
Yeah.
That's all I, thank you.
That is a great point. In the GM's report, I tell you monthly how many whales were clearing out. It's over 100 miles a month that our crew was working on to cost the buy an excavator for us to get into those areas that we can't fit right now, a tractor excavator that we can scoop out whales. Right now, it's all in labor with our small equipment. So, we are addressing the network. We are, all our, all our listations are on backup generator network. We installed the last one this month. So, they're functional even in emergency, and we are working through all those issues exactly to that point, you're making sure that the next one that hits us, we changed our radio network away from cell phones to that, regardless of the, you know, the damage, our people still talk. So, we're, I'm a big fan of that. I wrote that policy for the level. Trust me, we got it. We're going to work on that. And our team here is going to be able to, to our residents, full comfort that we have a oversight, that if we go dark, it won't be prolonged because we have plans to execute.
The price, the equipment that you're looking for?
Yeah. The price right now is 150, but we already have a budget in our, in the budget of 500,000.
Okay.
So, we already have the money.
Is that larger than the...
This is the, yeah, this is the one you saw fixing Sunland Gulf Art, the one KDL uses.
Yeah.
So, if we would have had it for that project, for example, we spent $3,000 in equipment costs.
Right.
If we would have had it, I would have put fire in the seat. We would have did the work. We would have saved water.
Are we going to be able to get it before?
Yes, it's readily available. It's a caterpillar, it's right up the road.
Okay.
So, once I bring it to you for approval, we're, and we have many uses for it, not for radio.
That was my next question. Okay.
Is that new?
We have one brand, I think one other person wanted to check up.
Any more comment?
Hello, good to see you again. It's been a while. Robert Addo, 3761, I've seen him. I've always worked very hard about giving that information to the county about taking advantage of doing things to keep people who are not doing anything with the property to increase the times and shape the core of the property. I've heard that very much, really, that it moves here. I've been here since 2019, and I see progress. And I just want to ask a question to the board. I'm stumped to have ready here wastewater treatment plant that put on hold for many, many years, and now we're all paying for it. Is there funds going to be set aside for future things like what if the pool heating system needs fixed? What if the new playground that came up needs maintenance? Are you projecting things to put aside for other projects in the future? Thank you.
It's in that plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is going to be online as well, so...
Yeah, you'll see it.
The board created it back in November with special buckets.
Right.
Those type of projects indefinitely.
Right.
We just need to make sure staff will recommend, populating that annually with the board will approve it, and those buckets will grow. So, if we ever have a pool or whatnot, we're not having to do a special assessment. We're just going to write to that bucket and say, I'll throw it out.
Exactly. Any follow-up or new business?
Morning. It's...
There you go.
Okay. This will be, with the new waste management plant proposal coming in, if you have projected a number of new residents that will be moving in, and is that in any way going to affect the $180 in year assessment, we as residents at this time will change.
The financial plan, if you don't mind, the financial plan that we approved back in November lays out not only the current population, it lays out all population for 15 years. So, it includes their contribution to this as well. This will be referenced as a lawyer, as Garrett mentioned, we will refine this this week.
Okay. Because that's important.
Yep.
One other fast thing with the cost of Schumacher, it appeared that the commissioner did acknowledge 5,500 or so was going to be paid by the state. Could this be reduced from the amount we have appropriated at this time if we will not be paying it?
We have no money appropriated for Schumacher.
Okay, I thought it was in the new plan.
We have a road connecting to Schumacher.
Yes.
That will be impacted.
Okay, I thought I read it was.
No, we're building Palermo Road.
Right.
We are going to build Palermo that's in the district. We pay for that. It'll connect to it. Connect to a new Schumacher that they're going to pay a hundred percent for.
Okay, a hundred percent. Okay, I read it wrong. One other fast thing, this new sling golf stuff or whatever it's called, is this an entity dependent entity? Or is that going to be maintained? Say like I was out there yesterday, golf carts were following them. People were on the sidewalk. I do walk around that sidewalk quite a bit. If I get hit in the head, is, they have come by me and gone into the.
Are you talking this in Frisbee?
Yes, yes.
Frisbee, Frisbee go.
Yeah, Frisbee, yes, go.
Is there any liability accepted even though they, it's not that, it is an in-house entity, but someone else's idea in building it. I didn't see anything in any minutes or it's not like it was.
So just like with other entities, we have rules posted, safety rules posted. As soon as you walk in there, there's a next. Nation for anyone playing on that, what they have to do. First, if you're a golfer, you got to do the yelp for. You can't throw when you see someone downrange. So that, we have an entity, not only our reparation committee, but we have the folks that helped us put in the books and whatnot, that will be actively monitoring that. We play, it'll follow under the district insurance policy as with any. You can get hit with a golf ball, you can get hit with a pickleball.
Yeah, it was unusual watching them. They, when it was windy, they actually were going into the street, into Edgewater. And the rest, they in the water Frisbee, a little dishing that happened.
We will monitor and safety reasons for that. We can't shut that down by our team. So, yes.
Okay.
I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Edel again. This is Bob. What's the reasoning behind spending a hundred thousand dollars? Is it really necessary for this signage? And do other cities, companies, have that in?
Well, I want to speak to, I'm just giving you an estimate right now. We do all the signs at one time. Once we lay out the plan to the board, we'll explain how we could buy these. I think based on how many entrances and we're not a normal, we're not, we're, we are in an odd city where we, we have very. Controlled access, I call it. So we can regulate what, where people get the message from. But once you get into Sunland Lake, there's a lot of, I call it segregated areas that we, we are trying to get the same message to. That's why it's causing us to have multiple sign locations. But once I set the location plan to the board, we'll identify how much we want to spend. I'm giving it, if I bought all the signs at one time, it's going to be close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Is it going to be near residence houses?
Oh, no, sir. It's all beyond the right of ways, main road, in and out of the district. So the closest I would say near a resident would be the entrance to Wood and Irons. Maybe. We're thinking about that spot and that's about the only place. The one on the backside is on Ortega. Soon as you come in, there's no houses there. So very, there's none in a neighborhood, if that's what.
What brought up the discussion that have this possibility to go forward?
A combination of putting out emergency messages for disasters, emergency oil. The concern we have of residents not getting that message and a combination of trying to advertise internal district events. Being a special golf restaurant. We don't have a good messaging platform, taking advantage of people driving by. So it's a combination of safety, just messaging in general.
What's the annual cost of this?
I guess, sorry, we're way ahead of the game. I'm just, we'll lay all that out when I tell them, cost plus annual expenses.
Okay. But why do they? Based on the?
Probably in the March, March 4th. March 4th, they go give you guidance to either buy.
Is that a discussion?
Once we get information, I can post it online and we can. Yeah. I won't put it out for a motion until it's ready and we get public input. Yes, sir.
Okay. But we've had numerous complaints from our.
Residents.
Residents saying that we don't have a very good communication base. And we've done several different things of emails, the app that you now can put on your phones, the connect. This is just another means of getting all of this information out to all of our residents, which we were lacking. That's the whole idea tonight.
District discussion to and from the board? That's it? Reading adjourned? Thank you for your help. Thank you for your.
We are going to shoot you now sometime. So that we can.